And six oh one. Norm, may I have a real call please?
Mayor Hendrick.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Stroker.
Present.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Present.
Councilmember Vasquez.
Present.
Councilmember Cornell.
Present.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you ma'am. May I call on Pastor Marcos Zuniga for our invocation this morning? Wherever please stand.
To begin with, I'd just like to thank each one of y'all for the service that y'all have done. You felt the need in our community and want you to know that many people are praying for y'all and we're believing God to do some great things. I've been in Odessa sixty-one years and I love this town as you do. That's why you're here. You wouldn't do this other than for the love of our deal. And just as y'all are watchmen, I'm a watchman, spiritual watchman, one of them, one of many. Let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we are just so thankful for who you are to us today. Heavenly Father, we're thankful for each person, God, that is before us here. God helping to govern our community here, to bring a sense to some chaos, God, and we believe that you have placed them there. Father, we recognize that your word says that righteousness exalts a nation, but a sin is a reproach to all people. And so, Father, we're believing God to try to bring some peace in this community, some organization to it, God, and I'm believing that each person here, God, starting with our mayor, God, Mr. Cal Hendrick, Heavenly Father, Mr. Morton, God, interim, God, Ms. Norma Aguilar, God, I want to just pray for them by name, God, believing that your hand is upon them. Mr. Dan Jones, City Attorney, Craig Stroker Large, Mr. Eddie Mitchell, Mr. Stephen Thompson, God, Mr. Gilbert Vasquez, Mr. Greg Cornell, Mr. Chris Haney, Father. Father, we believe that there's a special anointing to them, God. You lift up, you raise up leaders and you bring leaders down. You have appointed them for a specific time as this. And so, Father, we pray that you would give each one of them Holy Spirit wisdom, God, to be able to look at situations and not only through their understanding, God, but beyond their understanding, as they seek you, we believe that they will have the answer, Father, for our, our community here. So, special blessing on each one of them, God, and we believe, God, that our community is lifting each one of them, believing, God, for a positive, a report, God, of positive things, God. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Pastor Zuniga, thank you very much. May I pledge allegiance, Councilman Haney?
I pledge allegiance to the July of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. There are no proclamations tonight, so we will move to citizen comments on non-agenda items. Do we have anyone's comments?
No cards.
No comments.
Dallas left, so we're...
All right, let's move to our consent agenda. Does anyone have an opportunity to review the consent agenda? If so, I'd entertain a motion to accept.
So moved to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second by Councilman Vasquez. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. All right. Move to our regular agenda items. Item number six. Consider the bid to award Eduardo Madrid and Associates for the water and wastewater job order contract in annual amount not to exceed five million, five hundred thirty-nine thousand, six hundred ninety-one dollars and forty-eight cents, and authorize the interim city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city of Odessa. Alex.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I'm here to ask for your consideration and approval of the award of bid and contract for our water and wastewater job order utility contract. Our request for bid was issued on October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, and bids were opened on November fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four, with the sole submission being Eduardo Madrid and Associates. This bid and contract are for constructing replacement water and wastewater lines, fire hydrant replacements, the installation of water and wastewater taps for citizens, and emergency line breaks within our infrastructure. Our department is recommending the contract be awarded to Eduardo Madrid and Associates in the annual amount not to exceed five million, five hundred thirty-nine thousand, six hundred ninety-one dollars and forty-eight cents. Our department will initially allocate three million dollars per year for these projects. This allocation is currently within our budget.
Thanks, Alex. Is there any comments from the citizens? Okay. Any discussion among council? If not, I entertain a motion.
Alex, well, I do have...
Yes, sir.
Did you say that Eduardo Madrid and Associates were the only bidders?
They were the only bidders, yes, sir.
Okay, have, have they ever done work for the city before?
Yes, sir, they're currently doing our tax contract that is expiring this month.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, they do a fantastic job.
Any other questions?
Was this a, so I know this went on, I think there was a RFP for it.
Yes.
And the other we talked about earlier was an RFQ, and it got five.
Yes, sir.
Why would one get more than another?
To my understanding...
Is it just the qualifications are easier?
Qualifications, you know, for, are less subjective to what we're actually asking for. So, we put out this contract that said exactly what we're asking for. Six-inch, eight-inch taps, not, it had a whole bunch of line items as you could see in your packet. So, I'm not sure why. There were several contractors that did reach out, that did not bid, that spoke to purchasing, spoke to myself, spoke to our field crews also, that do work, contractors that come in and do that we have on other replacements, but nobody else, nobody else put a submission in.
Could be the scale of work.
And it could be the scale of work. Some people don't have the employees. I heard that a lot of that, they couldn't stretch it. They could do it job by job, but not keep somebody on totally. Because we do, we do ask for emergency projects. So, say we have a sewer line that has collapsed, that people are getting back up ASAP. Maybe we, we ask if they can bring on another crew, and there's a lot of times where they can't do that. So, certain things like that.
So, this was a bid, not a proposal?
Yes, this was a bid.
Okay.
Any other questions?
My other question on the change orders and minor modifications, are those lined out anywhere? Is there a dollar amount?
There is not. So, any change order can be submitted by request. So, currently right now, in our contract right now, we're doing a dawn tower valve replacement this month. So, what they did was I asked for what it would cost to do that work, because we only go up in this contract to twelve inches or below her, or below, not below her, I'm sorry. And so, we have twenty-four inch valves there. So, I had to get a change order contract, and then I would take that to the interim city manager, and then they would sign off on the work being done there. So, there, but I do not have a money allocated on top that would stop that.
So, they're just not going to be making change order after change order after change order?
No, so this is per project. So, say we have a project and it's like, maybe there, we need to, if we design them in-house, this stuff, this contract is everything in-house. So, you know, they will get, like, give a recommendation, hey, what if we put a valve here? We'll look at it, we'll see if it's worth it, but no change orders to the extent of hundreds of thousands of dollars. No.
There's usually a limit on that as well?
Yes.
That above that, we need to go to council?
Yes.
You have a limit on it for change orders?
It should be the, is that the fifty thousand? Yeah, so any, any change order is over.
There's a dollar amount, I was just curious on the, the minor changes.
Yes. But any minor changes, if it's not within the scope... Yeah, if it's not within the scope, then we would have to go.
Move in the right direction.
Yes.
Like to see this on the agenda every time.
Any other discussion? If not, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by, was it Cornell? Okay, and is there a second?
Second.
Second from Cornell. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pastor unanimously, thank you, Alex.
Thank you very much.
Let's go to number seven. Consider the purchase of one type-three truck for the fire department to replace the tender eight for the fire department worth about five hundred twenty-five thousand. Christina, there you are.
Yes, good evening. So, the purchase of this type-three truck will replace tender eight, which is close to reaching the end of its usable service life. The estimated delivery is four to five months from the order date, and this purchase is on a purchasing co-op from the Houston Greater Area Council for a total cost of five hundred twenty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars. This item was budgeted, and we actually came in below budget. We originally budgeted six hundred thousand. And I'm happy to answer questions, and we also have fire here if you have any questions for them.
Thank you.
How many miles are, is considered usable life?
Well, so I, I, I'm not sure on the mileage, but I will say this one has about twelve-plus years in service, which is...
Twelve years of service.
Can you look at the hours also of the running motor, right?
Yes. And this truck does go over more of the rough terrain, so we take that into account as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, so, if no more questions, I entertain a motion to approve this.
So moved.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by, first by Haiti, second by Cornell. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. All right. Agenda eight. Consider approval of purchase of courthouse audiovisual and court recording software for trials. Leah Huff Albers. Where is... Can someone cover for Leah?
I, I guess I'll do it. Is, anybody else want to step forward? Okay. I will attempt to do this. So, this is just equipment that will, I guess, new equipment for municipal court?
Municipal court.
And I will ask, I'll ask Kaylee this question. Normally, security purchases for the courts or technology purchases for the courts are purchased from the security fund or the technology fund. Are we doing that with this one?
This looks like it's coming from six hundred, ten, six hundred, I'm not sure.
Okay. Well, when, every ticket that the, that PD writes and, and we collect revenue on, a percentage of that goes into security fund and a technology fund for these type of purchases.
So, it's pretty much already paid for.
Yep.
This is a new purchase, so won't be coming out of the technology fund? Only, so the initial purchase will be from the department, and then we'll take over the maintenance after that. So, this should be straight department.
No, no. Did you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Tony's our new council members. Tony's our director of IT.
My mind's spinning right now. So, yes, Tony's our IT director. Yeah, so this wouldn't be coming out of the technology fund. It will next year, but any new purchases will, will come, will be budgeted through the department or some other means.
Yeah, Tony, it's a different technology fund. I'm not talking about your, it's a, it's a court technology fund.
Okay, all right, just making sure.
Don't worry, we're not taking it from you. That's why you stepped up, right? Okay.
Technically, we're not taking it from you.
It's a court technology fund.
Hey, Richard, I got a question for you. My, my information is, is a bunch of this stuff, a bunch of technology equipment sitting over at municipal, it's still sitting in boxes, it hadn't been, doesn't work, hadn't been used. I don't know what the situation is, just a little...
That, unfortunately, unfortunately, that's news to me, Mr. Thompson. So, if that's the case, I'll take a look.
Yeah, let's take a little bit, but I heard that equipment was purchased, and it's just sitting over there in boxes.
And for municipal court or for something else?
Municipal court, is what I understood.
Okay.
I was not aware of it, no.
So, we had, we had a work session about this. Right before I, I left, we had a work session about, about this equipment. They came in and did a presentation for us, and we approved that work session. Me, you, Greg, and the other old council, we were on this. I don't know why it waited to this long.
Yeah, that's, that's my point with that, but my information is a box is sitting over there.
So, do we already have it? No, no, no. So, we need to table this until we find out if we've already purchased it?
No, I, I don't think you need to table it. I would ask you to approve the item, and I don't think we've already purchased it. I mean, uh...
I wouldn't think so, but they just did this presentation. I know that right before we...
They, they may have done it in work session.
Yep.
Obviously, in work session, you're not going to approve it, so it has to come back to the council for a formal vote.
Okay.
We just have an answer to the question, that probably make us all happy. So, I mean, we could go ahead and vote on it tonight, but I mean, if there's something sitting over there, I think it's righteous, why? If you want to table it, you table it. Okay? I don't think you, I don't think you need to. Goppy? Yeah, did you have something to add?
We have purchased it yet.
We have not, yeah.
What's, what's sitting over municipal court, Goppy?
You come up to and just visit with this?
But sitting in municipal court is our kiosk.
Kiosk, yeah, kiosk, that's what I remember.
We approved that kiosk, the system too.
These are new ones?
Yes, and they should have already been installed.
This equipment is not that. So, if you want to discuss that, you really can't.
All right.
Other than to instruct...
Other than to find out what it was.
Yeah, it's just sort of know what it was.
Sorry. Thank you, we appreciate it. All right, so, there's a agenda item for consider the purchase of courtroom equipment. Is there a motion?
Aye. So moved.
A motion by Councilman Vasquez and a second by Councilman Haney. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Number nine. Consider renewal of the city's public entity liability insurance. Yvette? How are you? How are you?
I'm good, thank you. I won't be before you long. I just wanted to present the renewal for the city's public access liability insurance, and the amount is increasing by fifty-four thousand dollars, but we budgeted for it, so we have the money in the account.
One question.
Ask away.
Well, I just looked at the application, and you haven't marked it yet, so the terrorist coverage is fourteen thousand dollars. We have to accept or not recep, accept?
We can not accept it, but we don't have anything in place.
We don't have the coverage now?
We have the coverage now, and it's, well, it's increasing.
Well, I understand.
Fifty-four thousand?
No, it was fourteen...
The total is fifty-four. The total is fifty-four, and the increase is associated with, as they've said to us every, since last year that I was here, has to do with public safety issues. That increases this coverage. And we have had some claims in the past. So, they increased our, last year, they increased our SRI, our deductible, in essence, from two hundred and fifty thousand to one million.
So Chief Gurkha can keep his gun in his pocket.
Yeah.
I noticed there was a terrorist question on the application. I don't know why I saw it, but he did. Accept terrorist coverage or not accept terrorist coverage?
Right, that we will accept it or not accept it. One of the issues that we have too is, we've also got to consider the cyber security insurance, and that's coming with, that's with TML, it's not with states. So, I haven't had a chance to talk with the mayor yet about the bigger concern that we have to figure out.
Yeah, I'm just worried about, I mean, I don't know. It's terrorism that I, you know, we, that's my question. I just, it's terrorist coverage, so Odessa, Midland, you know, oil, drones.
So, would you recommend that we accept that part of the coverage?
I would. I would, I would ask my friend Tim Esmond to answer that question. He's sitting out there in the audience. I think your proposal does have it accepted, correct?
Yeah. We haven't, we haven't accepted.
Oh, we haven't?
We haven't accepted, because it was to, to bring before you. We haven't signed off on anything yet. It hasn't been presented to the mayor to sign.
City manager?
I'm sorry, this is your manager, I'm sorry. I'm a little tired, doing benefit stuff today.
They look alike.
I think what I hear, the concern here is that, that based on the last cyber attack, based on the fact we're the energy, probably the largest energy field in the world, that maybe we need to have some, the terrorist insurance, because I don't trust, with today's world, if we learn through workshop, it's crazy. So, I'm, I'm about to say we need to have every type of insurance we can.
I guess my only concern is I don't know if it should be covered under states or not. So, we need to have a more intense conversation around it.
Under the TML coverage?
Well, we have the cybersecurity under TML, and it was just more of a carve-out, so it wasn't robust coverage. And Tony and I had talked about it some time ago, and so, it's something going into the new year. We know that we want it to be a standalone policy.
This is...
So, no, ask...
This is excess liability, right?
Yeah.
This is just excess liability?
Just the excess.
Just my opinion, fourteen thousand dollars, I think we ought to be taking it, but it's just my two cents worth.
So, this, this cost is fifty-four thousand more than last year, correct?
Yes, sir.
And the fourteen thousand that Councilman Thompson's talked about would add to that?
It would add to that amount.
Okay.
And if that's the case, then I would need to ask for budget appropriation.
Sixty-eight. It'd be sixty-eight, and we can bring a budget a minute back to you if you need to. Is there, is this time sensitive? Can they table this?
It's January one, right?
It is January one, effective date.
I would personally say it's a good idea to have terrorist coverage.
I'm second to that, yes.
Okay, so let's do this. If it's okay with you, would you go ahead and check the box? Let's go ahead and include it.
Okay.
If we need to come back to the budget by the next meeting, we will.
Okay.
If it's not in the budget, I don't know if it...
That's fine.
Yeah, I'm just a little shy, not much.
Okay. Then, anyone from the audience? Okay. I entertain a motion then to accept the proposal with the addition of Steve's added terrorist insurance. So, we, so moved by Councilman Thompson. Second by Cornell and Haney both. They're trying, they're fighting each other for the second. All right, any more discussion, gentlemen?
And so, we do have a standalone cyber policy that...
We don't currently now.
Whatever we...
Councilman Stroker is just under our property, our other insurance carrier, which is TML. And so, Tony and I and the city manager will need to have some conversations around how we want to proceed, because it's not very robust at all. And it doesn't cover some of the things that IT, of course, has found out that they need as a part of this process. So, we know that we have to take a look at something else.
You're talking about the coverage being more robust.
Yes.
Their response has been amazing.
Yeah.
Is that right, Tony? Okay.
I think we need to address that when it comes up for TML.
Right, in which...
That part of this motion, that's not part of it.
Yeah. So, there's a motion on the floor and a second. Any more discussion? If not, I entertain a motion, I mean, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate it. All right, last item number ten. Consider and authorize the interim city manager to execute engagement letter with Weaver to conduct the, an audit of Discover Odessa. Kaylee?
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and Council again. I'm really here just to pass off the microphone to our friend Renee Earl, who's in the audience, so I'll let her come up and talk about this audit.
Good evening. Welcome to you new council members, and welcome back. Mr. Morton, glad to have you in our community again, but you spent two decades here. So, each year, our chamber does our audit. Weaver has done that for quite some time. As you know, we have three departments. Operations, which is the membership side. We also have economic development that is funded through Odessa Development Corporation, as well as Discover Odessa, which is tourism funded through hotel motel taxes. So, our chamber has our audit. We pay for our audit of those three departments. Discover Odessa has, if you will, a pull-out section that this pertains to for the engagement letter, and then economic development also has a pull-out letter. Their engagement letter was agreed upon by Odessa Development Corporation a couple of weeks ago. So, this is the standard engagement letter from Weaver that we bring each year for you all to sign off on.
Thank you. Any discussion, gentlemen?
Renee, yours, this is annual?
Yes. Yes, and in fact, it's taking place now and should be finished by January.
All right, guys, I entertain a motion.
Aye.
Councilman Vasquez moves to accept the proposal.
Second.
Well, I think Steve beat you. Councilman Thompson. All those in, any more discussion, guys? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Renee, stay up there. Happy birthday.
Ah, thank you so much. Nowhere, nowhere I would rather be than spending my birthday with you all, so, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, we're going to now open up our public hearing to discuss a couple of issues. All right. Item number eleven. Open a public hearing to consider approval of the request for, and I hate to say this, Nochtrend? For a zone change for a single-family resident. I'm going to leave it at that.
Okay.
You say the rest.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, the applicant is requesting for a zone change from SF three, single-family housing to multifamily housing. On, I'm also going to avoid reading everything here. So, what they want to do is create more of a infill development. So, this property that you guys are seeing right now used to be a church. And let me see. And so, there, it was originally two lots as, sorry, that's what they're proposing. So, what, why we're here today is because our planning department is recommending denial. The reason why is because it goes against our ordinance, and here is why. So, when we have single-family residential and then multifamily residential, single-family residential only goes up to what you would consider a duplex. And then, everything else somehow it's categorized into multifamily, which would be three or more. But by labeling it or giving the zoning of MF one, we now open up the ability to actually have higher density. So, when you have, as you all have your houses, and then imagine allowing a zoning to come into your next door, and then having the possibility of have a multifamily development happen there. The reality of that happening based on the size is obviously going to be a little bit difficult, because they still have to conform to all of our setbacks based on that zoning. So, the, the size of the lot does, would not allow us to be able to do a multifamily housing in here for like more than four units, for example. However, because my code says XYZ, I can't, I have to recommend denial. But, we did say that if you choose to approve, we would recommend that you approve it with the zone change of MF one with the condition that we approve a site plan. By us having a site plan, that means that this exhibit that they're proposing, which is the three units that they're trying to add into here, would be the only allowance on that specific lot, because it would always be tied to the site plan. So, there would be another condition for them to go through. Would take them a little bit longer, but it would still allow them to complete the, the process, and we start doing more of the infill development in this area. Additionally to that, and this is the floor plan for the proposed three units. This is how it currently looks right now. So, basically, just imagine adding one more house right in the middle of this. This is looking south, I believe, and this east. This is west. If you look at the second picture in the bottom, there's already a, it's a storage facility that's there. So, you're starting to see the transition. So, by us allowing a higher density will not dramatically affect the neighborhood. And they're doing a great job with the design and everything. I wasn't able to get like elevation of it. They didn't have it ready, but I strongly believe that it will be one. So, it'd be one building, so picture row houses, but with their own rooftop. We did compare it to our comprehensive plan. We did compare it to our comprehensive plan. Like I said, it contradicts itself, but it's just because of techni, like our codes are so old that it doesn't meet today's definition. So, this is where the struggle becomes, and that's why there's ways that we can approve things, but we would have to add a little bit more of conditions to it just for us to be safe. But other than that, everybody else has reviewed it and they're on board if you decide to go with the M F one with the condition of adding the site plan approval. And we did not get any objections from the neighbors there, so if you have any other questions for me.
All right, so is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this issue?
Can you go back to that first photo? Of the photo, not the drawing.
Can, sorry, she's gonna have to go.
And you gonna place it where?
Right in the middle.
Right in between he needs to?
Correct.
Yeah, but they're gonna tear this down and build.
Of course.
Three new, three new things.
So, they're gonna tear it down?
No, they're not gonna.
I actually, I'm.
It'll look like that with three across.
I'm actually not, I'm gonna have to defer to the applicant because I'm not sure if they're here, but I don't know if it's a complete tear down or if they are working with the framing and then rebuilding.
That needed completely tear this.
I just misunderstood. I apologize.
Can you show us the floor plan again, please?
Oh, I can do it now.
So, yeah, it builds these new. Things.
I mean, they're gonna redo the plumbing in there and everything because there's, there's not enough plumbing in that building. It's a church.
Right, everything will be up to code.
What's your recommendation is not to approve?
So, we are recommending denial based on our ordinance. However, if you decide to approve, we're recommending that if you approve, approve the M F one with the condition of a site plan approval, which would be this image that you're seeing right here.
Liz, did this go to P and Z?
Yes, it did. Sorry, thank you. It went to P and Z, and they actually recommended for approval. So, their recommendation was for, to approve this.
Not gonna be a wall filled housing?
I can't guarantee that. That would be up to the.
Any, any comments from our public?
Well, if we leave it the way it is, you don't improve the neighborhood.
Correct.
Oilfield or not.
Any other discussion?
Oh, I think they have some.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. You have to close it and open to.
I already opened it when we started.
No.
I already opened it when we started.
This is why we need a parliamentarian.
So, now we'll, we'll close the public hearing. Don't move, though.
Don't move.
All right. Any other discussion, gentlemen? If not, we need to entertain.
Now, wait a minute. Tina, you have, you have a suggestion, so please offer it. Yes.
No. Elizabeth, while we're waiting here, I.
Yes.
I love your maps and your pictures. When is the drone coming?
They didn't provide an elevation. Sorry, I did not draw this. The applicant did.
Your maps and your photography is always so beneficial to what you're talking about.
I want you guys to know, it's, it's hard to keep up with everything, so, trying to, you guys need something different, just let me know.
Do I have a motion? Is, is this wall filled housing?
I, I can't answer that. I don't know. We just look at the designs and to see if we were to be like workforce housing, they would have to apply for workforce housing.
Any motion to either accept or reject?
I moved to accept.
My area, man, and I like it.
So, I don't know if this helps, but by law, you can't have more than four unrelated people living in one household. But the reality of somebody going and checking in someone's door.
Well, there's only showing three, three rooms basically on here, so.
There's been a motion to accept or propose by Councilman.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Stoker. Is there any other discussion?
Just, just clarification, you're accepting Liz's recommendation for approval with site plan review, right?
So, you would have to amend to, to override me to approve with the condition of the site plan.
That's my motion.
That's, that's my motion.
Yeah, because it said open a public hearing to consider approval of the request for a single unit with the site plan, right?
Correct.
Where I'm reading it, so it is a motion to approve.
Yes.
And that, that's his motion.
That's his motion. Craig seconded. All right, so any more discussion? If not, call the vote. All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, now we need to open up a second public hearing, item number twelve, to consider the request by Landgraph Crutcher and Associates on behalf of owner John Burnett Struckin for a zone change from F D Future Development District to S F dash two, single family residence. Liz.
Thank you again. So, the applicant in this case is what I brought to you guys last weekend. When we annex a property into the city limits, it comes in as a future development. So, it doesn't come in with the zoning until they're ready to start developing. So, what they're asking here is to change the S F three, single family district to M F one residential district in order to create, oh, sorry, I'm reading the wrong one. Always do this with you guys. Okay, so L C A is requesting to change from future development to S F two, single family dwelling district, which would be exactly what you guys are seeing towards the south side. Same lot size. I did ask average, how many lots do you think you can fit in there? They think between thirty to thirty-two lots would go into this development. So, this would add on to our housing, much needed housing development that we need in this area. We did compare it to our comprehensive plan. As, as you can tell from what's around there, it does fit. This is what our comprehensive plan is asking for. We did circulate it internally. There was no objections towards this, and P and Z did approve at five to zero on November twenty-first. And we did send out notifications to see if we had any objections. None of them came back. Therefore, staff is recommending for approval of the future development to S F two.
Okay, thank you. Open the hearing now. Anyone from the audience who would like to discuss this matter? Seeing none. I'll close the public meeting. Gentlemen, any discussion, any questions? All right, if not, entertain a motion. Eddie, is it just I want to do a motion?
I'm motioning. I wasn't gonna race nobody.
All right, a second by Mr. Haney. All right, there's been a motion and a second on the floor to show the approval. Is there any more discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Liz. All right, moving on to our resolutions, agenda item number thirteen. Consider accepting land donation from Pete Parks Bell Ranch to, for the Miami Bell Sports Complex and giving the interim city manager the authority to execute and the amended and restated escrow agreement. All right, so Mr. Bell would like to get this done before the end of the calendar year. We've had in our packets the.
So moved.
We want to get this done.
We're gonna pick it up at nine, Richard.
I think everybody, I feel a sense of optimism here. Is there any discussion? If not, entertain a motion.
So moved.
So, move by Councilman Thompson.
Second.
Second by Councilman Haney. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, item fourteen. Consider authorizing Odessa Police Department to accept appropriate funds and authorize expenditures for Occidental Petroleum Corporation donation amount of ten thousand dollars. Chief Gurkey.
Good evening, Mayor Council. This is simply just a request by the Odessa Police Department to accept a donation from Occidental Petroleum in the amount of ten thousand dollars, and then to allow us to spend that, those ten thousand dollars on needed equipment and training.
Perfect. Gentlemen, any questions for Chief Gurkey?
No, sir.
If not.
So moved.
Make a motion from Councilman. Second by Haney. Y'all guys are killing me. Any discussion?
We told you we're gonna move.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Chief. All right, item sixteen, consider the approval of utility relocation for I twenty, segment one. Alex.
Wait, fifteen?
Oh, another one? Oh, sorry, apologize, Chief. I saw Chief Gurkey. I'll go to the next one. Don't worry.
You cut me five thousand dollars.
All right, consider authorizing O P D to accept appropriate funds for an amount of five thousand from the Hindu Association of West Texas.
And again, just basically the same thing. This is just a request by the, the Odessa Police Department to accept the donation of five thousand dollars from the Hindu Association of West Texas, and then to allocate those funds for equipment and training.
Fantastic. I entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
Councilman Stoker second by Canal. Oh, Haney, sorry. All, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
All right, now, number sixteen, consider approval of utility relocation for I twenty, segment one. Alex.
Good evening again. The Utilities Department is asking for your consideration and approval of the utility relocation contract with Cop Finley, Tex dot, on I twenty, segment one. This contract is composed of professional engineering services to determine the extent of water and wastewater relocations necessary to avoid conflicts associated with Tex dot's widening of I twenty. Please be aware, due to the length of this segment and the number of utilities in this portion of roadway, that this contract and cost are only for survey purposes. There will be engineering and design and construction costs associated with this segment also. The cost for this survey portion is four hundred ninety-five thousand, four hundred fifty-one dollars. We are also seeking approval for the allocation of funds from the general fund. We have met with finance and they have agreed to this allocation. This project and the following Tex dot relocation projects to come are one hundred percent reimbursable. With your approval, the Utilities Department will proceed with the state mandated relocation.
We're getting our money back.
Yes, sir, every bit of it.
Tex dot pays us back.
Gentlemen, any questions?
But they pay.
More discussion? If not, entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Vasquez. Second by Stoker. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Alex.
Thank you very much.
All right, this is item seventeen, consider failure to appear program. Leah Huff Albertson. There you are.
Short staff today, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
We have half of our staff at Texas Municipal Court Education Center in Austin, Texas. All of my senior staff, so I've got all newbie, so it's been a little exciting over in court. I apologize for being late. We are just renewing our contract for the failure to appear program. It's an omnibus contract, and all it is, is allowing us to hold people's register, their driver's license until they take care of their commitment to the city. So, it's, it's a pass through ten dollar fee that we pay the state with D P S, and it's a great enforcement tool. It helps us with about twenty percent of our cases. And that's why I'm asking for you to approve and say yes.
All right, any questions? If not, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman, Canal and Haney seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, item eighteen, consider the Ector County Appraisal District Board of Directors for twenty twenty-five term. Norma.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Council. This item is for, to council to consider making an appointment for a member to serve on the Ector County Appraisal District Board of Directors. There has been some change in state legislation and in the way the council, the governing bodies need to appoint. So, I've, I've requested Mr. Lane Young, if he would come forward, and he'll explain the process.
Good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar, Council, Mayor, Mr. Morton. Good to see you. So, this is a new process. We've had a resolution since nineteen ninety-four for the election of our board of directors, or appointment of our board of directors. Senate Bill Two last year was passed during the general election, and that changed the tax code. So, now we have to do an election process, just like every appraisal district throughout the state does. We had a nine member, nine member board in the beginning, and so we will continue with a nine member board. The process basically is outlined very clearly in the tax code. We're supposed to, we have guidelines, and I've sent these guidelines to the taxing entities throughout the county, giving them some direction on how the process works. I don't know if y'all have received that, but September twenty-third, we sent a letter over about the current board members that we have, the non-member board member, board members. So, the nomination for the board members was to be done at that point. And then the election process is currently underway. There are five current people that are nominated for the board, and so there's not gonna be much changes from what we have had in the past. I believe you probably do have a resolution casting votes that we prepared to send over to you, and as well as a voting ballot. So, if you have more questions about how that process works, it's a, it's a pretty complicated process. It's in the tax code six point oh three, and so, but I'd be glad to try to answer any questions if you have any.
We have six hundred seventy votes, I assume?
You do, yes, sir.
Okay, and we can, there's five people up for election, and all five are listed, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We elect them, right?
We, yeah, well, each entity, each county, school district, county, based on, I'm assuming the size of your tax, it'll be depending on the votes you get. So, we have six seventy, like Ector County has twenty-five hundred.
Right.
So, we can split it evenly, or unevenly, whatever you want to do.
Yeah, the voting calculation is done by the levy, the taxing levy, levy. So, the school has about fifty percent of the levy, so they get approximately twenty-five hundred votes because they're a hundred and eighty million dollars out of the three hundred and fifty million in levy that we collect, so.
Thank you.
The old process was each entity had one representative on there?
The old process wasn't one. It was kind of calculation based on the percentage of levy as well. The school had five. The county, I think, had two. The city had one, and the college and the hospital all had one. That was the way it was in the past. But, in my opinion, all five of the appointed people will represent all taxing entities going forward. I think they all have done that in the past anyway, and I think it's how they perceive their jobs anyway.
Thank you.
So, will all five be elected?
The five that y'all are gonna elect now will be elected. There's three that will be elected by the general population. I think that those three were appointed because they were vacant in August. So, the three that were elected, basically the vacancy process is filled by the board of directors, and they did that in August. Three, those three were, that were appointed by the board were already on the board. So, there's three that are, that were remaining on the board, so.
Okay, so we just need to, I guess, a motion to split our votes equally among the five, I assume, is what we entertain. Is that right? And do the resolutions send to them? Okay, I entertain a motion, gentlemen.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Councilman, Councilman Thompson seconded the, split our votes among the five candidates. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Yes, sir.
Motion passes. All right, let's go to item number nineteen, item number eight miscellaneous, appointment of boards. You have in front of you the, the, some of the.
So, Mayor Council, if I may.
Yes.
These are the list of boards of members that their terms are up. I was not able to provide to you all the applications for each of them due to the network being down, but I was able to send you the applications, and I made hard copies there in front of you of the, of the applications that are interested in the Odessa Development Corporation. For your consideration.
So, that's the only one tonight?
Yes, if, if y'all don't mind, can we wait for the January meeting? That way I'll be able to provide all the applications to you in a timely manner.
I had someone, I don't know if he sent it to you or not.
What was his name, sir?
Gavin.
He hasn't sent it.
I'll check with him. I'll get with him.
All right, so which one do you want to address? I apologize. Looking through there.
So, on the Odessa Development Corporation, letter E?
Yes.
Eugene Chavez, he fills a vacated position, so that's why his term was up. He was appointed in August this year.
So, he's out. He's off.
He can be, he can be reappointed if Councilmember Mitchell would like to reappoint him or appoint, appoint someone else. His choice. And we don't have to do it to not.
Yeah, I wanna point Gavin.
Okay, okay.
He already has the application.
Okay.
We haven't filled it out yet? We haven't submitted it yet?
I think he has, but you know, he's just like you, back and forth with his lawyer mess.
Right.
Mess?
It's a mess, trust me. It's a mess.
I get with him.
There are criterias too. Norma could cover some of the criteria that he needs to make.
I get with him in the morning. And make sure he gets that over to you.
Okay.
Melanie Holman, she has turned out due to the bylaws of the O D C board. She can only serve six years.
Right, all right. So, we're gonna do that now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'm gonna. Put up, can I? Okay, I'm going to put up, can I adjourn? Is that a form of a motion?
After it's all done. Little motion for everybody.
Okay.
James Kirk, he is at large, and his term is up.
I'd like to nominate Peggy D.
And Mayor, Larry Robinson is your appointment?
I'd like to nominate Thomas Blackstone.
Okay, those are the ones that our terms are up.
All right, so now entertain a motion to accept the candidates that have been presented tonight.
If we do them as a group or individually?
We can do them as a group.
Okay. Does that include Gavin, or does he need to do his application first?
We can include Gavin.
Okay.
I'm motion.
You got a motion from Eddie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Greg. Any discussion, gentlemen? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. And that's all you want to do tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else under section 19?
I just want to ask something about the people that have been replaced with new individuals. Will they be sent some kind of a thank you letter from?
Absolutely. So we prepare a thank you notice to the outgoing members, and I'll have Mr. Mayor sign it. And then we also do appointment letters to the new members and have Mr. Mayor sign it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to item 20, Executive Session. As authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.089, the City Council may adjourn to executive session to deliberate, one, security assessment or deployment related to information resources, technology; two, network security information is described by Section 2059.055, Subpart B; or, three, the development or specific occasion for implementation of security personnel, critical infrastructure, or security devices. B, Executive Session, as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, Subpart I, subsection A, consultation with attorney. The City Council may adjourn to executive session to discuss pending litigation or settlement with City Attorney and/or the attorneys hired by the City for the case of Aaron Smith versus the Odessa. Calls number D-23-04-0425-CV. All right. Only entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Shall move.
Shall move by Council Vasquez, second by Councilman Haney. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion unanimous. We will now move into executive session at 6:55 PM.
I need a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Thompson, seconded by Eddie. All the fairies say aye?
Aye.
All right, no action was taken in executive session. Entertained motion on subsection B.
So moved.
What is the motion, to pay the 175?
Pay 175 for settlement of Aaron Smith lawsuit against City of Odette. Is our motion correct?
So moved.
Seconded, Thompson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's go to subsection 20, oh, shoot, section 21. Consider authorizing the transfer of funds from reserves and approval of purchase to CDW Governance LLC for Okra, my favorite word, data security software. Tony Flores, there you are.
Yes, sir, we'd like to move forward with the purchase of Okta.
All right. Is there any discussion? Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Wow.
Get out first and then hang him a second, I think. So, those are my two. Any discussion, gentlemen?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Believe it or not, we are adjournment.
I move that we adjourn.
Oh, you didn't have a motion for that?
Yes, sir.
Can't just do it? I have no power. What kind of place is this? I want power. Okay. Your motion of councilman Vasquez saying by Councilman Thompson, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
It took a long time.